Free Ace.
Thank you. We're here tonight, obviously via virtual Zoom for Neighborhood Services Subcommittee. With myself, Chairman Roach, I'm with Councilor Rita Mercer and Councilwoman Noon. Joined by Terry Ryan, Christine McCall, and Jared Alvis from the city. Tonight, we are here to discuss the city's plan to assist small businesses in Lowell during the summer months. And with that, I will pass it off to Ms. McCall. Christine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did the members of the Subcommittee receive a PowerPoint presentation?
I didn't see it. I didn't see it.
I did not either.
Okay. I don't, do I have the ability to share my screen, Michael? Or no?
I have to ask Maron. I think you do.
Okay. Well, we can send it to them after. We just put together a PowerPoint so you could see what it was.
Wait a minute, hang on, hang on.
Essentially, we put together an expanded temporary outdoor seating for restaurants. As you all know, we have sidewalk seating currently, but we wanted to be flexible with, oh, here we go.
Okay, Chris?
Thanks, Michael. Jared, are you, I think you're.
Yeah, Christine, I have the slide up so I can navigate through it as we go.
Thank you. So what you're looking, so our temporary outdoor seating, so basically, we created an outdoor program to allow restaurants to operate in outdoor spaces in addition to the sidewalk. We wanted to implement this because we know that there's going to be greater physical distancing requirements for all restaurants. So this program's going to be allowed citywide, so downtown, in the neighborhood business districts, the traditional mixed-use districts, the urban mixed-use districts, and the downtown mixed-use. Those are the identified zoning districts where we know that a lot of our businesses are located. So under this program, it would be really easy for restaurants to apply to the city to expand either into metered parking spaces that are right in front of their business or into private parking areas adjacent to the business, as long as they own or they have permission from the property owner to do that. Instead of trying to figure out an overlay for street, we're calling them streeteries, street seats, and then curbside pickup for retail, and even restaurants who want to take part in the street seat to expand their dining room, but also still use the curbside pickup for their to-go orders. We expanded Terry's program at the parking department that they would apply directly to Terry to get a bagged, a meter, a bag on their meter and a sign so they can have pickup for their food, and then if it's a retail, they can do pickup.
Wow, Sakari's trying to get in. How do I get him in? Oh, I got him.
Should I keep going?
Yeah, 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 everyone's just getting in.
Okay. So we basically took our existing ordinance and changed some of the rules to make it easier. So if a restaurant were to go into a parking space, they, the pedestrian space would no longer, would be up against the door to the restaurant, and that all the sidewalk seating would be adjacent to the parking area. If businesses did not want to go into a parking space, we've relaxed some of the rules. So if they don't serve alcohol, they don't need a fence. We also relaxed our design requirements, which is only applicable to the historic districts. So if, we understand this is, times are tough for restaurants, so if they can only have access to certain rental furniture or if they plan on using furniture inside outside, we wanted to make sure that they could use whatever was available to them. This eligible businesses are restaurants, cafes, coffee shops. Businesses that, restaurants that offer, often offer both food and alcohol, we don't want this to become just an alcohol-only situation. The ordinance will also allow the installation of tents. So for this temporary or outdoor seating, if weather is not great, restaurants can still serve their customers. As long as the proposed tent is less than 400 square feet, there's no additional permitting that would be required. For businesses or for restaurants that I'm assuming that are, you know, tavern in the square or outback or Chili's that are adjacent to larger parking lots, if they were to install a tent with flaps inside and heaters, they'd have to get a building permit through the Division of Development Services and a fire department permit because they have to have exit signs and other safety protocols in place. So that is a little bit of another step that they'd have to take, but for what they're asking, we think reasonable. We're also relaxed temporary signage. So if, you know, we just want to support restaurants who are just trying to grab the attention of customers as much as they can. So if they want to, you know, put up a sign in the window that, about a sale or a special, they can do that. Or if they have amended hours and they really want to get that out there, they can do that. That includes sandwich boards. So that really has to do with the seating. We also, and then I mentioned the implemented curbside retail for, retail and for food. All of these, aside from the permits for the larger tents, none of these ordinances are, have a fee associated with them. And we have a limited supply of Jersey barriers, but we may be able to provide them for certain sections of the outdoor seating for wheel stops. If enough, if enough restaurants take advantage of this, I mean, even if only one does, we will install and their message boards throughout the downtown to alert drivers that there will be dining, you know, people dining in the streets so that they'll need to slow down. And then on top of that, I think you'll hear more tonight at the City Council. Henry, Henry Marchand from Case has a motion response on to how to revitalize our downtown and things that we can do to support businesses, even though a lot of the festivals and activities have been canceled this summer. So pending on funding, we are hoping that we can strategically place different entertainment nodes in the downtown so that people who are enjoying a meal in a temporary outdoor seating area, they may also get musical or other talent. And then we're also thinking about different ways that we can activate the space by engaging with our artist community. So that's sort of what we are working on right now. And then as, as the season goes on and as restrictions get lifted, we can expand, potentially expand seating, maybe shut down streets at different weekends to encourage more people to come downtown. We want to, we still want everyone to enjoy downtown and all of our businesses throughout the city, but at a physical distance.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Christine, I have a couple of questions real quick. So what's the schedule set up? Are you hoping to be ready to go on June 8th when Phase 2 opens?
So as I understand it, the next council meeting is on June 9th, so between now and then, and that's when you'll vote on the ordinance? So between now and then, we'll work with businesses to pre-approve them with their side. If, if we feel the council is, you know, going to pass the ordinance, we can work with businesses to pre-approve them. So as soon as the ordinance passes and as soon as the restrictions are lifted by the state, they can install the furniture.
Okay, so if, if June 8th, as of right now, is the, is the, is the date for the next phase to begin, and June 9th, we have a council meeting to hopefully approve this ordinance, is it conceivable to say that businesses will be ready to go that Wednesday or Thursday?
I, I think some will. I think others, it'll take them longer. I think restaurants that are already open are already starting to think about this and are, you know, getting ready to gear from a takeout only to having customers again. I think some of the businesses and restaurants that have been closed, it'll take them a little bit longer.
Okay, and then the schedule, is it, will it just be normal business hours for the restaurants Monday through Sunday?
For the seating or to, yes. So it'll be, I think we did put hours of operations. We said outdoor patios will be closed by 10:00 PM on Sundays through Thursdays and 11:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays. And that was just to balance the downtown, not just the downtown, city residents who may live near these outdoor patios.
Okay, the last one is, so how can we reach out to the businesses, whether it be a restaurant or a small business, to get them, either the paperwork or just to get the word out? So hopefully, I'm going to imagine you'll be pretty busy that and tomorrow, hopefully. So how quickly can you process it and give the approval to a, to a business?
We have already drafted an online application form. We're working on having a paper version as well. So if, if after tonight Subcommittee and then tonight the Council, it seems like all, you know, every, the ordinance is likely to pass. We can actually email every list, email we have for every restaurant, which we've gotten quite a large listserv now with our, our recent PDVG application. And so we can alert everybody to the online version of the application. And then we can do targeted outreach in certain neighborhoods if we feel, and we can actually drop off PDF versions so they can fill out the application by, yeah. And they can either, they'll have the option to print it out and mail it in, or we can actually, we can coordinate with the health inspectors or, or, you know, staff could do targeted outreach and drop off application.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Councilor Mercer, anything? Rita, you there? Council Noon?
Can you hear me? Okay, I'm sorry.
Good, Rita, yep.
All right, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my understanding that the city will look into the possibility of offering local musicians, musicians to entertain the patrons in the downtown for diners. I think that's a very good idea. It shows the ambiance is going to be spirited in the summer. We also need to spruce up our shop local slash dine local campaign. That's a, be a good campaign. God knows I have supported local establishments. I've gained like 10 pounds, but that's all right. Now, tonight, there's a new word added to the city's vocabulary, and it's called cedary, meaning seating areas in the street. So that's a new word for us. Under a proposed ordinance on tonight's agenda entitled sidewalk seating outside restaurants. So that's a good word. I'm not opposed to outdoor seating, but sitting in the street, we must be very careful for people's safety. The concept is great, but safety needs to be addressed. And do we have a downtown coordinator still? And who is that?
We do not have a downtown coordinator, but the Economic Development Office is going to partner with Development Services and Health Inspectors and with the Parking Department staff.
Okay. We got to be very careful with the seating in the streets. I know that streets will be blocked off, but if someone is inebriated and still driving, God knows, we never know what's going to happen. So I'm very concerned about that, but I'm thanking you for your effort. Everybody's coming together to make the downtown worthwhile with the summer festivities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mercer. Council Noon?
Chairman, thank you very much for hosting this Subcommittee meeting, and thank you Christine and Terry and those involved here. You know, we all agree that restaurants, bar, and other mom-and-pop shop that, you know, create jobs and make the city is the better place is struggling right now. I hear right now from Christine is that, you know, that we are focused on bar and restaurants and trying to, you know, relax a way of operate, meaning permit and whatnot, that apply to restaurants and bar. So what, other than restaurant and bar, what have we done in terms of helping the other mom-and-pop shop and/or specialty shop sort of that also struggle at this point?
So our office has been working with all businesses in the city to help with technical assistance. We did, we're doing some marketing, helping with the SBA loans. I think our, this, this temporary outdoor seating is, you know, an immediate response to how hard and how fast and how obvious the restaurants were impacted. And this is something that we can do sort of in concert with the state relaxing their rules. Retail was just allowed to do curbside, so we are trying to think about how we can help our other businesses use public right-of-way space as well. I'm not sure that it's going to take a ordinance change in a lot of instances. I'm thinking of hair salons, barber shop. People who just need a place to queue, maybe when it's not their turn, and maybe they're running a little bit late, and who doesn't have the ability to wait in a car. And that may just be trying to do something creative on a sidewalk near a business, but we won't know what that is until they reopen. We are starting to think about, similarly to what we're doing with the outdoor seating, is potentially some pop-up retail spots. So for businesses that don't have customers come in and sit down, but rather have them peruse their items, we are trying to work to provide them more space as well.
Yeah, you know, I do agree with the concept really, Christine, and giving that if, and when they reopen, the new rule for bar and restaurants will apply, and that will be, you know, they will probably need to operate at half of capacity that they have been due to the restriction in term of six feet apart and stuff. So I like the idea, I like the concept of helping them to be able to do seating outside and/or maybe parking lot if they, they own that parking lot. I do also caution, like Councilor Mercer, that is, we need to also be careful of safeties as well, given that if it's close proximity to the roadway, you know, you don't want to, you know, God forbid, you know, you survive COVID-19 and yet you, you know, got, you know, hit by a car. That just really, you know, something that we make sure that to avoid that from happening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Noon. So I know we have the manager and Mr. Ryan here as well. So, Matt Manager, when that phase begins on June 8th, is there different, I guess, stages of a phase? I know we talked, Christine talked about the retail being able to do curbside and so forth. So do we expect from June 8th, you know, until whenever the next phase starts, a, a more of a phasing end?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. So June 8th is the next phase, and that is when restaurants are able to have, to open with certain conditions and restrictions, one of them having to be, having to do with outside seating. That's all dependent on the numbers working correctly. So, you know, as, as Christine McCall pointed out, one of the reasons we wanted to get this ordinance before the council tonight was to try and refer it to a public hearing so that we would be in a position to, for the council to act and give the ability to have this outdoor seating. The restaurants that either don't have it now or for expanded outdoor seating. At the same time, Mr. Chairman, there is legislation that's in the State House. There's a bill, for instance, in the Senate, and, and I believe the Governor's Office is looking to see if there's a way to even streamline this process for downtown, especially restaurants. And so it hasn't passed yet, but we're, we're watching it every day. The reason is, as Christine may have pointed out, we have our own ordinance that we have to be mindful of and amend in order to allow this to happen. But also, there's the ABCC at the state, and, and a restaurant would have to then go through the process with the ABCC. That can take four to six weeks. And, and so, you know, the group that the Lieutenant Governor put together to work on the reopening plan, she has a smaller group working on hospitality and restaurants and so forth. And so they're trying to come up with a recommendation to streamline this whole process because if you don't, you could lose a good chunk of the summer. And so I think the goal for everybody is on June 8th at that next opening to be as ready as possible to open and to make sure all of the, you know, permitting process doesn't bog companies or restaurants down in order to get that done. So, so right now, we're proceeding under our own ordinance, trying to amend it, but we could find out they give us some kind of relief and maybe we don't have to, to amend it. But we'll see. But especially the ABC piece, that's something the state's going to have to take action to try and move that along for restaurants.
Okay, so, you know, with Councilor Mercer and Councilwoman Noon's points of safety and also other businesses than restaurants, has it been the thought of, of actually blocking off some streets maybe on, on weekends so people can easily walk around and maybe open up the garages for free? I don't know if Mr. Ryan wants to comment on that, but just in order to bring people down, not just the downtown, but to other parts of the city, but when you get to the downtown, do you close off maybe Middle or Palmer to get more activity down there?
Yeah, and, and we've had some preliminary conversations, especially on, on those nights or weekends where you want to encourage more people in the downtown, especially if there's entertainment and so forth. And so there's some streets would be problematic, but it is something we've asked the traffic engineer to look at. So for instance, you know, Palmer and, and Middles, you know, a busy place. But there's also doctor's offices there, so we want to make sure that you're not in any way adversely impacting what some people are, are down there to do. So Natasha and Christine have been looking at all of those options, and we'll come back to the council with some suggestions once we get into it. The real goal is so that, especially for those summer months, that we are in a position to try and be as supportive as possible as of these businesses. And, and you're right, whether it's restaurant or retail, you know, right now at this phase, as far as what's being allowed. Phase three, we're not quite sure. You know, again, we've got to get through Phase two and then see what the numbers look like for Phase three. But, you know, this is kind of like, no one's done this before, so everybody's trying to learn as we go, you know, in terms of, you know, how can we best support? But I was pleased to hear that the, the state, as part of the reopening, is coming up, you know, digging down a little deeper because not quite as easy to just say to a restaurant, "Go ahead and open," and "Go ahead and expand to the sidewalk" when there's all kinds of, you know, I don't want to say red tape, but it's red tape when it comes to things like the ABCC and everything, and that's going to take time. So, so they are trying to work on a plan in a kind of a expedited manner.
Good. Thank you. Allison, we're joined by Councilor Samaras, Councilor Conway, and Councilor Chow. So I'll start with Councilor Samaras. How's it looking saving?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, thank you for having this meeting. One of the questions, Christine, technical assistance, have many of the businesses applied for that type of assistance?
Well, we don't really have a formal application process for technical assistance, but we answer calls from businesses every day asking for help with a variety of things. So sometimes it's as simple as filing, making sure they refile their business certificate with the city clerk's office to helping us connect, helping them, our office connecting them with the resources to help them fill out, you know, an SBA loan application or something like that. I'm sorry, Counselor, you're muted.
I shouldn't be. Am I there now? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. The, the thing is, I'm sure a lot of these businesses are overwhelmed with the work that they have to do. So I think technical assistance is important. Sometimes they don't realize enough about asking about it. But have you thought about the idea of possibly bringing in some retired people who have been very successful? Or, you know, going out to search for successful business people who were in the restaurant business, who had successful businesses that might be available to give them advice? Because I think sometimes there are people who've been through not this kind of a problem, but problems before. They're creative, they know how to do things, and I, I think this might help. Is that, has that been thought of as a possibility?
Yeah, we partnered with the Greater Lowell Chamber a couple of months ago to do something similar. But I think we could definitely do it again now that we're further along, and it could be sort of a Zoom roundtable. And I think including current businesses, we have some businesses that are, despite every challenge that they're facing, are doing fairly well and are being really creative. And I think having other businesses in the city learn from them could be really important, so.
I think, yeah. Thank you.
We could definitely organize that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilor Conway, you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you. I appreciate the, the fact of having this meeting. I think it's extremely important. Just to follow up a little bit what Councilor Samaras said, I think that's a good idea to bring people in because a lot of these individuals have gone through the good times and bad times, and somehow they have figured out the formula to be, continue to be successful. And as we know, that a lot of people don't quite make that cut. And I think the other thing, which is, is very important here, we've talked about it numerous times, how, how important partnerships are. And this, you know, with this type of situation, partnerships are more important than ever. When we know that the City Manager's Office, the City Council, and the city itself are there to help support these different businesses, I think that's just so very, very important because they're going through these difficult times and they just want, I think, a shoulder to lean on and just to get a little bit of advice and a little bit of positive reinforcement. And so, again, I think it's, I applaud you, Councilor Roach, for having this meeting because I think it is important to let them know that we are here for them. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's just a great meeting. I'm actually very, very excited to get all the businesses back on track and hopefully see a big crowd when we get the opening again. And thank you for the presentation, Christine. Very, very valuable. Just a couple of quick questions. I, either I might have missed it or somehow. When we have this permit during the street dining and the having alcohol on the street as well, and when the businesses apply for the permit, is that like our business has to do once a week? Or would it last throughout the entire duration of the pandemic?
That's a very good question, Counselor. Right now, we're only proposing to amend the outdoor seating. So right now, restaurants who want to serve alcohol and don't have approved sidewalk seating, alcohol sales, and they want to expand in the street, have to file with the License Commission and the ABCC to expand their area. We're hoping and we're expecting the Governor to issue some new guidance and regulations this week about restaurants. So we're hoping he'll relax that rule. But right now, restaurants could either, through the License Commission or the expanded seating areas, apply for a one-day special license to serve alcohol, or they can go in and expand their liquor license altogether to include the expanded seating area. But they'd need to have approval from the city first. But again, I hope, we're hoping some new guidance that comes out this week, that'll make the timeline between the approval of the expanded seating and the alcohol will be much shorter.
Okay, so just to clarify a little bit for some, for myself as well as for other people out there who are watching. So for the people who like expand restaurants with alcohol license inside, if they want to serve alcohol outside on the street, So for the people who like expand uh, for restaurants with alcohol license inside, if they want to serve alcohol outside on the street, They would have to get, uh, as far as we know for the city anyway, they would have to apply each time. It would not be um, over So many days and duration, is that, is that correct?
I'm sorry, no, so they could either, to, they can get approved for expanded outdoor seating into the parking spaces, But they can only serve food until they get their liquor license amended to include that outdoor seating area, and that's a filing State regulation requires you file with your local license commission and then it has to go to the state ABCC for final approval. There is a local option where you can just get a one-day special license. Um, so a, a business could do that, But it would only be valid for one day.
Sure, and I guess if, you know, we probably want, if we're gonna have outside activities, reactivities like entertainment and so forth, We probably would want to encourage or coordinate that especially, let's say, the downtown area with so many uh, restaurants with local license. We would probably wanna coordinate that have all the restaurants apply for the serving, the ability to serve alcohol Uh, on the street on the same days, uh, so that way we'd be more encompassing and, and more broad. Um, so I would, I would encourage that, uh, to coordinate, um, everybody apply, uh, let's say for a weekend, we start a weekend to have some Entertainment on the streets, let's coordinate that, that all the restaurants um, apply for the serving alcohol outside. And uh, with that said, um, from what I understand now too is that People now can go buy alcohol themselves and um, drive at home. Um, so if we go on the second part to tie in, if we were to have Serving alcohol on the street on, let's say, on a week altogether, um, I'm sure some, some people would be walking around carrying the alcohol. Is that permissible? Uh, can they leave where they, where they buy the alcohol and walk on the Close street like Palmer Street carrying the alcohol or that would be prohibited?
Um, so for expanded outdoor seating, um, what we're proposing that's in front of the council tonight, You will not be able to buy alcohol at a package store or take out from One restaurant and get out, get a beer and then sit in this, uh, sit in a streetery at a different restaurant. The street seats are gonna be associated with, with a specific restaurant. Um, so the only time you could be sitting in a parking space is if you were served a meal And a drink from the restaurant that went and got their expanded liquor license. Um, when we send out the application form, we will include what the current License Commission processes to encourage all restaurants to go expand their Um, outdoor seating area so that they can serve drinks in the parking area, but we Don't anticipate that the summer activities of closing Middle and Palmer Um, will happen, it'll be sort of, that would, that's more July and August when the social distancing is lifted. Um, and if we were to close off Middle and Palmer completely Later in the summer months and do nodes of entertainment, I'm not sure If people can walk around with open containers. That would be a question I'd have for LPD, um, because as I understand it, you can't do that at Folk Fest, you have to be in a tent, so I don't think that would be, that would be allowed, actually, I mean.
Sure, thank you. Very exciting, thank you so much. And a lot of small, each other work out of course, but it'll be great once it's going. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I know that we uh, have um, Jack Moore here on the line, who's uh, from the Downtown Neighborhood Group. Uh, Jack, you there?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman of Arkan Councilors and uh, Manager Donahue and staff, uh, and uh, basically, I'll be very brief. I was just curious about what uh, people might be doing, especially with uh, With the downtown uh, restaurants since uh, they've already been uh, been, restaurants everywhere have been hurt uh, so much by this and uh, It'll likely be uh, problematic when things do open up again if there's uh, reduced seating. So, uh, anyway, um, the The things that um, Ms. McCall outlined sound like a great step in that, uh, in the right direction and I, I particularly Like the idea of uh, maybe opening up something like uh, Middle Street later on in the uh, the summer, uh, because Some, some places like that, that, that just doesn't, to me, seem like there'd be uh, enough space really to uh, to have Have traffic going by and still have a little bit of uh, of seating. I mean, I'm, I'm not criticizing trying to do it as much as As uh, as, as you are right now, but I mean, right away, uh, Councilor Mercier, Councilor Noon and uh, Councilor Rourke have brought up the safety uh, issues and uh, But I'm, I'm sure you, you're considering all that and uh, that's uh, that's all I need to say, but uh, thank you very much uh, for all that you uh, you folks are doing.
Good, thank you very much for calling in. Um, so Mad Manager, just a quick question for you. Could this ordinance be sort of similar to like a living document where You know, you would have the ability with the um, DPD staff to, to make Changes to it on the fly, so we don't have to, um, you know, wait to a council meeting or every two weeks? If, if something comes down from the state that's, makes it easier for, for a business to operate, That'd be something that can just be communicated to us if we'd be?
So, you know, obviously the ordinance has the provisions that is advertised and so we couldn't change that, but What we're hopeful is that when the state does come down with some guidance on these things That we're very hopeful is going to give it uh, be much easier, then, then yes, this is, it, it's We, we could then recommend that that's the route we go, and I think it's gonna be very, um, I think from what I'm understanding, what they're preparing is that not gonna be a complicated process at all, um, for, for restaurants, so. Right now, we're, we're stuck with the existing framework of, we have to amend the ordinance, you have to apply to expand your liquor license, You have to go to the ABCC, um, and, and everybody, I think universally agrees, this is just gonna be too time-consuming And it's just gonna eat up a lot of time and money for, you know, businesses. And so, you know, But we didn't wanna waste any time, because what happens if that effort gets bogged down? So that's why we wanted to get the ordinance out the door. But if, if it, between now and June 8th, when, is it June 8th that it's on for a public hearing? Um, i- if, if something comes down that makes it unnecessary, June 9th. Um, or, or, you know, then, then we'd recommend that. So, I think that, that's why, fingers crossed, I'm hopeful that's gonna be the case.
Great, thank you, Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I concur with Mr. Chairman that uh, Whatever we can do to give flexibility to the managers and particularly the DPD, It is essential that we do all we can to ensure their survival, all these businesses, restaurant, bar, You know, mom and pop shop and so on and so forth, so um, you know, um, to give them up, to give them the, the, the leeway to get this done. Um, I know that Christine McCall have done a great job. If I may, Mr. Chairman, say something about The uh, the other part of the uh, uh, small businesses, the art gallery, museum, the music Venues and so on as also at risk as well, and we, they too, they too do need our help. Uh, maybe partnership with private sector to help keep them alive as well, do what we can. I know Christine McCall alone, uh, with other partners may not be able to do it. Christine McCall may have to expand partnership with other You know, uh, 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 people to make sure that we reach out to the Art gallery, museum and music venues and whatnot to make this happen. And particularly, I like to, Mr. Chairman, your idea of Close up some of this uh, street like Palmer, Middle Street and even Market Street, Mr. Chairman, and You know, a week announcement and to the, to the community and say, we closed Middle Street or we closed Market Street for this event and, and really uh, go a long way to express our, you know, our, our What we, we as a council, as a city want to do to help our, our businesses uh, thrive again, now because Despite the relief fund, I know some got it, some didn't, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty, Mr. Chairman. I thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. Uh, you know, I, I would suggest, hopefully looking into that, maybe a Friday afternoon, uh, Mad Manager through Sunday. If I could look at the possibility of uh, closing down some of the, of the side streets or maybe part of Market Street. Somewhere in the middle where the businesses that don't get hurt Monday through Friday, uh, that are on those uh, street locations. And then maybe for the weekend, uh, again, a Friday, Saturday until Sunday afternoon where Uh, people could come downtown and, uh, you know, enjoy the uh, the area of, you know, walking around and so forth. Um, and then the last question that I have for you, uh, Christine, um, would be is Do you walk us through a process? So if somebody calls your office and says, how do I, how do I do this? How do I get this done? Can you do me like a step-by-step of how a uh, business can go about uh, applying and being granted the access to this?
Sure, we created a form online, so I direct them to the website. They would just have to fill out their name, address, Phone number, email. Um, they'd have to provide a rough sketch of the area. We're not talking about certified site plans. We just wanna know the general area And they can do it by pencil. Um, they can submit photos if they don't think their picture is clear enough. We just need to understand the area that they're talking about, Especially if it's in the street. Um, if they are gonna go into the street, they have to provide uh, liability insurance That lists the city of Lowell as a, an additional insured. Um, then they upload it, it gets sent to Development Services for review. Development Services will coordinate with, for the street seats in the metered parking spaces, coordinate with Terry and Natasha To ensure that there's, um, if they're in appropriate spaces, they get bagged and then the barriers go up are safe. If someone were to propose um, going into a private parking lot, they don't need certificate of liability insurance. They don't really need a sketch, but we're gonna ask for one anyways, but they do need to provide written consent from the property owner that they have the right to be there. Um, and we're think, hoping all in from the administrative side, as long as The um, restaurant owner submits everything the first pass, um, it would don't, it would take maximum a week For staff to give the staff okay and then try to, at this point, schedule to the next city council meeting, but hopefully that will be relaxed.
Okay, so if it's a week turnaround, I'd imagine that hopefully starting tomorrow, you'd be ready to go with either Um, you know, a publicity campaign or, you know, like you said, emailing all the businesses in the city Uh, that are eligible to do so and to really hopefully get people started for uh, the week of June 9th.
Yes, if, if the council agrees, I can email every business that we have um, an email for tomorrow morning with a link to the application form. And then we can start our outreach.
Yeah, then maybe a little blurb about, you know, what we're trying to do and how we're trying to assist. Uh, you know, and actually encouraging, you know, phone calls or emails with questions and uh, concerns, I think would be uh, would be great. So, Christine, thank you very much. Uh, I know Mr. Ryan has been quiet over there uh, this meeting, but That's why I say thank you to him for the uh, the, the program where businesses can have a parking spot Uh, in front of their uh, of their property that allows people to come in And uh, park for a quick five, 10 minutes either for takeout or to go in and get something. And uh, I've gotten many compliments on that, uh, Mr. Ryan, so uh, thank you for that idea and I'm sure you'll be uh, being used a lot for this one as well, so thank you very much. If you wanna just say a quick word about that, how many businesses have taken part in this program?
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, uh, we have seven restaurants currently that are participating. We have one food pantry on Heard Street and we have the Social Pub on Jackson Street. Uh, typically, there's an application they fill out and we can have the sign and the meter bagged within two hours. And so that's the way we've been working, and if anybody else is interested, we will certainly put one up. So, you know, whatever we can do to help, we will do.
Great, uh, thank you. But I think it's, again, it's a, it's a really well-thought-of idea. Anybody else have anything like to add before uh, we adjourn? No, with that being said, so Christine, if you could just maybe think about At the council meeting tonight, when going through the ordinance, if you could just go through the application process Uh, for the most of you maybe listening at that point in time, I think that'd be a great idea. You did an excellent job explaining it there, so Hopefully it won't be too tough to do it again, but a, a half hour, 45 minutes. Uh, but with that being said, thank you to everybody involved that uh, has taken part in this. I think it's uh, all good, positive news. Uh, and with that, I will seek a motion to adjourn. Some of, Councilor Mercier, second by Councilor Noon, uh, thank you very much. See you in a few minutes.